I didn't know if that's where.
All right.
Ready, Madam Clerk? All set, ready, good, okay. Calling this meeting number twelve, the South River Mayor and Borough Council on August first, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Please read the statement of notice of publication, Madam Clerk.
In compliance with chapter two thirty-one of Public Law of nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River, or remotely via Zoom, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the borough website, and the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Krenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman Gindy?
Here.
Councilman Gortenski?
Here.
Councilwoman Mira?
Here.
Councilman Olivera?
Here.
Council President Siula?
Here.
Mrs. Ballas will be absent for the evening. Please stand for pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for moment of silence in your thoughts and prayers. Please remember former Councilman Jack Alli, who suddenly passed away. He was involved in many different activities and organizations in this town. Gave of himself to this town and to his family. The South River will be diminished because of his passion. Thank you, please be seated. There are no proclamations, honors, awards, presentations. The agenda session, which is our business session of the regular meeting here. I was requested by the young lady who, mother had the chickens, to bring that issue before the governing body. It was explained to her that she could go before the zoning board and get a variance, but she requested that to see if there's any desire on this governing body to revisit this ordinance. I do not see her here, so, but I will ask, as I promised, is there any desire to revisit this prohibition on chickens? Okay, very good then. We'll move on. Councilwoman Mara, the library roof.
Uh, yes, at my last library board meeting, it came to our attention that in appropriating funds to some of the roof repairs in our, from our borough buildings, the library was one of them, and they fixed a part of the roof that didn't need to be fixed. So, nowhere where they had a leak in the roof, was it repaired? And from what my understanding is, they were told that what was done is done, and that's where we're going with this. So, I brought it up because we did get, I guess, past minutes from the meetings where the discussion was made regarding the repair of the roof at the library. And I guess at the point of time when the roof was repaired, the director was away. So, they just repaired a part of the roof that didn't need to be fixed. So, there's still a leak at the library. So, I asked to bring this up to see what we can do about it, because I guess we put it in with fixing our roofs from, I guess, one of the fire departments, and I guess probably this building as well, when we put all that money together and contracted somebody to do it. The library was not fixed, so.
Mayor, the library roof was evaluated before we went out to bid by the engineer, and whatever repairs that he thought were necessary was done, along with the fascia that had to be replaced that was damaged by woodpeckers and assorted other things. The areas that we did do that was over and above the contractor's, the change order at the end, is there were cuts in the roof of the new roof that he saw, and he went and repaired them, because they would lead to leaks. Everything is documented. The roof is, the roof work is guaranteed. It's guaranteed by them. It's inspected by the engineering firm on a weekly basis. We know nothing of any leaking roofs, that the original roof from the original library was repaired to make it tight.
Since it was repaired, did it leak?
Yes.
Okay.
I have gotten no emails from the director of the library telling me this. The job is not complete, I could send the roofer back, but I can't do anything that I don't know about.
I, from what I, my understanding was when, I don't know who she reached out to, I don't know if it was to our business administrator or DPW, I'm uncertain. Just, she said the portion of the roof, because it wasn't the whole roof that was repaired, the portion of the roof that was repaired was not where they had their leak. So, they continue to have a leak mainly above the public computers that we have in the library. So, they don't have those computers there at the moment because of the leak, so.
You said that they're not finished there?
The job, they're finished there, but the job is not completed a hundred percent yet.
Okay.
We're into the last phases. So, I sure would like to get an email from the library director telling me where she sees the leaks, so I can send the contractor back there.
Okay.
First I've heard of it.
Is she on vacation anytime, or is she gonna be there every day?
I can contact her today and tomorrow. I believe she goes away this week, but I'm, maybe I can get her before she goes. I know they're going to National Night Out. I think she had said she wasn't gonna be able to go to National Night Out, because she would be away this week, but I will double check.
Check, please, and, you know, see if we can resolve this. Okay, thank you for bringing that up. All right. Moving on to our ordinances, there are quite a few ordinances, second reading and public hearing. We'll see if we can get this, I can get this right this time, beginning at two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-two. To our new clerk, welcome.
Thank you.
Let us begin.
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-two, bond ordinance providing for capital improvements in the acquisition of various capital equipment, appropriating eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Therefore, en authorizing the issuance of seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof, authorized in and by the Borough of South River and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Make a motion, waive the full reading.
Second. Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Mr. Siula, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public, if there's anyone who wishes to have any questions or make any comments concerning this ordinance, you may do so now. Please give your name and address. First call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Gindy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siula, all in favor?
Aye.
All against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Motion to move the ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-two.
The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Gindy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siula. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-three, Madam Clerk.
Two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-three, an ordinance to amend the code of the Borough of South River, chapter one ninety-three, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, by amending section one ninety-three dash thirty-one point one, schedule two A, handicapped parking thereof.
Make a motion, waive the full reading.
Second. Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Mr. Siula, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public, if anyone wishes to have any questions answered or make any comments concerning this ordinance, you may do so now. Please give your name and address. On first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion has been made to close by Mr. Gindy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siula, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Motion to move ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-three.
The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Gindy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gortenski. Discussion. And just so that you know, because we're going through these ordinance, the first one was a bond ordinance for capital improvements. This is an ordinance concerning handicap parking space on Raritan Avenue. Hearing no further discussion, roll call.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-four.
An ordinance by the Mayor and Borough Council, amending the Borough of South River Code of Ordinances to repeal chapter one seventy-four, entitled Flood Damage Prevention, so as to adopt a new chapter one seventy-four, entitled Flood Hazard Areas.
Make a motion, waive the full reading.
Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Mr. Siula, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. If anyone wishes to come forward, ask any questions or make any comments, you may do so now. Please give your name and address. On first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion has been made to close by Mr. Gindy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gortenski. All in favor?
Aye.
All against, the ayes have it. This is an ordinance concerning the floodplain management regulations for the Borough of South River. Your pleasure on the ordinance?
Motion to move the ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-four.
The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Gindy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Olivera. Discussion.
I just have a quick question, if I can, maybe to Bruce. This floodplain management, does it impact severely anybody in town, like, make any large changes to anybody in town right now? As to their property or how?
I don't think it changes the flood boundaries.
Okay.
It's the regulations that govern what occurs within.
Going forward, okay. That was the only question I had.
Very good. Anyone else? Roll call.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-five, which will amend the code to add article six, entitled Electric Vehicle Charging Stations. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter one forty-seven, entitled Electrical Connections.
Make a motion, waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Siula to waive the full reading, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
All against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public for questions and comments. Please come forward now, give your name and address. On first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion has been made to close by Mr. Gindy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siula, all in favor?
Aye.
All against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance?
Motion to move two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-five.
Ordinance has been moved by Mr. Gindy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Olivera. Discussion. Roll call.
I'm sorry, I have a quick question. I don't know if I missed it on the ordinance, but does it say the amount the escrow is supposed to be, if they need an escrow for the engineer on this?
It's the next ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Establishing fees in connection.
Okay.
Well, actually, I'm sorry, if I may.
Please.
It isn't, the fees are just the fees. The escrow is actually in the, um, the previous section, because it refers to the previous section, I believe it's, what is it, twenty-eight hundred? No. I can pull it up.
I stand corrected. Yes? Do you remember, Bruce? No?
I thought it was in a separate ordinance. I don't remember. I'm thinking thirty-five hundred, and I'm probably wrong about.
I'm thinking thirty-five hundred too, but I'm not sure.
I know it was lowered from the five grand, because we didn't need all of that, so it wasn't put there.
That was the solar. This is when someone's looking for an increase in their electric service. We had a different escrow account for that review, somebody upping their service.
Okay.
I'm asking because, you know, as us being the council members up here, once these ordinances start going into effect and people actually have to pay these fees, they're gonna ask us. And if none of us know.
Uh, it's twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five.
That's only for an upgrade, correct?
Yes.
And. If I may interject, it's just not if you have a small plug in the wall one, it's not the case.
Okay.
It's just when we think there might be.
Level two.
Increase in the service that's needed, and to know what the transformers need to be upgraded in order to provide that service.
Okay.
And it is an escrow, so whatever is not used will be returned.
Okay.
It's almost like the solar power panels. If somebody comes to Borough Hall and they wanna do solar panels, they're given an application, and they're told what the escrow fee is gonna be. The escrow fee is actually paid for at the time of the application, and whatever is returned back is returned back if it's not used, correct?
Yes.
Well, actually, the resident has to request to get their.
That's true.
Return back, because if you do not request it.
No, that part is true.
Nobody will let you know that you have.
You're right.
Money in that account.
In the very beginning of the application, there isn't asked an escrow fee, because we go through that with the planning board. The very first thing that they ask for.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-six, establishing fees in connection with the ordinance of two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-five. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter one fifty-five, entitled Fees.
Make a motion, waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Mr. Siula, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public for comments and questions, please come forward now. Give your name and address. On first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion is closed by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mr. Gortenski. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance?
Motion to move two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-six.
The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Gindy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siula. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-seven, concerning the deputy chief's position within the police department.
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter seventy-two, entitled Public Safety, Department of.
Make a motion, waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion to waive the full reading has been made by Mr. Siula, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening this to the public, please come forward now. If you have any questions or comments, please give your name and address. Please do so now, on first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion has been made to close by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mr. Gortenski. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance?
Motion to move two thousand and twenty-two twenty dash twenty-seven.
A motion has been made to pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-seven by Mr. Gindy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gortenski. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to ordinances, first reading by title only, two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-eight, which is adding an adult agility class.
An ordinance of, an ordinance to amend the Borough of South River, chapter one fifty-five, section nineteen point one, section twenty-two dash sixty-two, to amend programs and class fees.
Pleasure.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-eight on its first reading by title only, and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with the second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P. M. on August the thirteenth?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, I'm sorry. Twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, by video conference via Zoom, or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
I'll second up.
Did you say seven P. M.?
Seven P. M.
Sure you did, okay then. Motion has been made by Mr. Siula, seconded by Mr. Gindy. Roll call.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
We'll revisit this on August the twenty-second. Moving on to two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-nine ordinance, Madam Clerk?
An ordinance to amend the code of the Borough of South River, chapter one ninety-three, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, by amending section one ninety-three point thirty-one point one, schedule two A, handicapped parking thereof.
Your pleasure on the ordinance?
I move that the council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-nine on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with the second reading and public hearing to be held at a meeting at seven P. M. on August the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, by video conference via Zoom, or in the council chambers at the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Ordinance has been moved by Mr. Siula, seconded by Mr. Gindy. This concerns handicap parking removal and addition on certain streets in South River. Roll call.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
We will revisit this on August twenty-second. Our last one is two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter two fifty-five, entitled Pedaling and Soliciting.
Your pleasure on the ordinance?
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with the second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P. M. on August the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, by video conference via Zoom, or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Siula, seconded by Mr. Gindy. This concerns implementation of a no-knock registry. You may remember Mrs. Ballas talking about this. We couldn't do anything until we got our clerk, who is officially her first day here, so, welcome again.
Thank you.
And, roll call.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
And we will revisit this on August twenty-second. Moving on to our reports, as we traditionally do, beginning with our Borough Engineer. Good evening, Mr. Koch.
Good evening, and thank you. The two thousand and twenty, twenty, twenty-one roadway projects are essentially done. The paving work on Alborn was completed today. Striping and signage will be addressed, and then we can start looking at closing that out. The two thousand and twenty-two roadways, we sent the plans down to the D. O. T. for review. When we get there, okay, we can pick a bid date and move forward with that. Two thousand and twenty-three, we made that application, and announcements usually come in the October to November range. The local aid, pardon me, the Transportation Alternative Set-aside Program, I had somebody from the, on my staff attend a session on it, an educational session on it, and they made it clear that walking paths around parks and such are not eligible items. It's something that helps people get from one point to a more, to a bigger destination with, by alternate means of transportation. Have some documents that I'll send over, so that you have a better idea of what might be eligible and what not. And the mayor, you did send me another D. E. P. one today, and that is for improving facilities that'll reduce flooding. I gave that a little bit of thought. I will give that some more thought, and then I will discuss that with you, okay? The substation maintenance, we gave High Energy Electric a list of items to be included in the SCADA system. They are working on getting pricing, and I would hope for your next meeting, we would have a change order to present to you. It will come out of the allowance that's in the project. It will not require any additional funds, and there will still be funds left over in that project. There's, so, once I get that number, I can put forth the change order, and you'll have that. Well, number two, meeting tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, the licensed operator will be there, the instrument gentleman, Chuck, people from our office, to test the well and see how the controls are working. Agora has done some initial testing on that, and there's, most of it is in good shape. They're just checking all the different functions to see if any wires are misconnected, which is something that can happen. But once that's done, we should be in a position for that well function. If there's any little things found, they'll have to be corrected, but at that point, the well should be available to operate. And then we amended the proposal you had asked for, which was for the air gap, for the backflow preventer. We added the sodium hypochlorite storage. We went with a larger unit mounted outside in an enclosure. It gives thirty days of storage, which is the new D. E. P. regulation. And we also rolled in the lead galvanized water service investigation for the approximately twenty-four homes that have indicated the potential of lead service. And that is it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments for Mr. Koch?
I do, Bruce. The alternate transportation, would like bike trails, like bike paths be an option for something like that?
I think it would, if it helped people from one area, let's say, get to the downtown by an alternate means of transportation instead of driving. If it was a bike path, like a loop around the lake, it would not.
Okay.
And they say that rather specifically, and there's, actually, what they're doing, which is interesting and probably good, is if anybody has a project to put forth, you have to make a request for a pre-application meeting, which is mandatory. You have to prepare a map and a cost estimate to be discussed at that meeting, which is done via Zoom or one of the other platforms. done via Zoom or one of the other platforms. And I think they kind of give you the nod or not and tell you, don't, don't keep moving forward, because they didn't come right out and say that, but it's pretty clear that it's a clearing process. Like, yes, you can move forward with the application, or no, don't, which is good, I think, because I don't like to see towns like yourself make an application. If it's really not going to be competitive, you're spending money with little to no chance of getting funded. I just, I don't like to see that, so.
Okay.
So, sorry, so Bruce, to piggyback, so essentially, we would have to tie in something like, for instance, like Varga Park Pacers through the marsh around like the VFW and tie it into?
Downtown.
To downtown, essentially. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
A project like that?
I've, what I've always thought would be great was if we went from Grecowski Park over to the soccer field, because anybody else has to walk up and around, walk, drive, and the whole development there and come down to get in. So, some kind of connection like that. I think it has to be a minimum of $350,000 project. So they're really trying to maybe limit the number of applications they have to review so that they just have to review the competitive ones. That's me projecting that, but I think that's what's going on here, which I applaud. I think it makes sense. So give that thought. We have time, but the mandatory meeting is coming up. On the other new one, Mr. Mayor, I believe there's a meeting next week, on Wednesday, perhaps, or a session, and I put that on my calendar so I can get more information about that one.
Excellent, very good.
My other question was, I saw you had discussed Back to the County regarding Main Street?
Yes.
Did they give us a timeframe of when they would do Main Street, or is that?
Mr., I'm smiling, Mr. Landenski, because we sat in on a meeting regarding that, right? And it sounds like a lengthy project. An exact start date has not been provided, in my record, I didn't hear that.
I don't think they're going out to bid yet even.
Right, so we don't have that yet, but I will, I strongly suspect we'll be invited to a pre-construction meeting, and then we will have more information on that.
Okay.
All righty.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. Thank you, Bruce. We have our fire chief here. Hello, sir. Do you have anything to report? Okay, very good. I do not see Mr. Zanga, who I believe is out today. He's on vacation. I don't see Mr. Sores. I guess he is also on vacation. So, we come to our police chief, who is not on vacation. Are we, are, oh, of course we do. Are we all set for tomorrow?
Yes, we are.
Excellent, excellent.
National Night Out.
Five to nine, Denny Stadium, National Night Out. I'll speak a little bit on time for comments, okay? Anything for the chief? Nope, we're all set. Madam Clerk, anything to report?
Yes, I do. The Acapulco Tropicana will not be proceeding with their liquor license because the buyers are backing out.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Nope, okay. Madam Attorney?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Mr. Business Administrator?
Mayor, the only thing I have to report is, since Adriana wasn't here, I want to commend the Water Department. During the last drought, we used a heck of a lot of water, as much as 1.7 to 1.8 million gallons a day. And with what we receive with East Brunswick and what we pump from our existing wells, we will keep up with that with no problems. Our tanks are full, and the system operated very well. The other thing is, your, your liquor license that you passed last week, last meeting for Kilimanjaro? Kilimanjaro. They already violated today, they're reclosed them down. Police Department is working with the ABC to put penalties on them, and at this point, they are back to being closed again. And that is all I have.
Okay, very good.
I have a question for?
Sure.
Mr. Landenski. I'm not sure if you'll know this, or, because it was actually a question for Mr. Zanga. At the last meeting, I had asked about their budget and what we receive regarding the DPW budget, and they had mentioned that it wasn't updated yet on the emails that we've received. And then that following week, we got, again, the DPW report, and I'm unsure as to if it's updated or not still, because a lot of them are close to the 90% of the budget being spent.
Some of those, they're still the temporary budget. The administrative assistant's also been on vacation, so I don't think they've upgraded it yet. The next one you get should reflect their regular budgets, but some of their line items are reaching high numbers, such as vehicle maintenance, building maintenance.
Yeah.
Running way ahead.
Buildings and grounds was already at 103%, that's why I was asking. My other question, since you spoke about the water well, how much of our water is currently coming from East Brunswick still?
It varies between 600,000 to 800,000 a day. We're, they guarantee us 850,000 a day, but we have not reached that lately.
So how much of that comes from our water, is what I'm asking? Like, what percentage comes from East Brunswick? What percentage comes from our wells?
We're doing about a million, and they're doing about 600,000.
Okay. And then, once our second well is up, well number two being up, how will that change with?
Well, we've met with the consultant, we're meeting with the engineer, we've been discussing it. When the new well goes on, we'll take a look at it and see if we can drop the number from East Brunswick to 500,000 or 600,000 gallons a day. That would save us a very substantial amount of money for next year, but we have to let the well run for a while to be able to establish what we're producing.
Okay. I believe that's all I have.
Did, talk to me tomorrow about the, the water tower and the overflow. Look into that. Okay. All right then. Time for the Borough Council Report. We'll start with Mr. Gindi.
Thank you. Our, last, last month, we had a municipal alliance meeting. We are having a car show, which is going to be held in September. The date is tentative. We believe it's going to be the third week in September. We'll have more information as it comes, which is going to be held right here on Main Street. The zoning board meeting for next month, or this month, I should say, is going to be on the 23rd, as well as the planning board meeting, which is going to be on the 16th of this month. Last month, we had a planning board meeting where it consisted of the master plan workshop. It was a very, very good meeting. A lot of people came out. We spoke about a lot of interesting things. One of the things was aesthetics, greenery, you know, basically what you want to see on Main Street. A lot of suggestions were brought about, but it was interesting because I'm listening to a lot of people talk. I was, Todd Bletcher, our planner, did a fabulous job with showing us different townships and how their main streets are up to today's standards. But it was, the interesting part was, throughout the years, being part of the planning board, and I'm talking quite a few years, there was a plan that I've always had, surprisingly, a friend of mine found it for me. It was called Atlantic Group Study, and if you actually read about it, and it was done back in 1987, it actually shows what Main Street should be today. And this is something where I think that Cindy Wilk, which is our chairman, which is actually here from the planning board, I will be getting you a copy at our next council meeting, oh, sorry, next planning board meeting. This copy is actually for the mayor. But it's an interesting read. It shows you what Todd Bletcher was actually explaining to us and what he has seen at different townships. It's something where I think we should kind of look into it, if we could save some type of money when it comes down to moving forward with, you know, rehabilitating Main Street as well as our connecting streets. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Seula?
Thank you, Mayor. EDC met last month, and they're moving forward with the 501(c)(3) so we can start applying for grants for Main Street. So that's continuing, and we'll keep you updated as we go along. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Olivera.
Summer rec is going well. This is the second to last week, with the last day being on August 12th. Speaking to Terry, they've been averaging a little over 100 students per day, so we're, we're very excited about that. Everyone seems to be having fun. She's doing new things with the kids, and it's just going extremely well. I want to thank the council for passing on first reading the agility class for adults. It seems when we started an agility class for the kids, parents were waiting around and thought it was, be a great idea if they could participate. So in order to bring the ordinance up to date and allow adults, we did pass this for first reading. I do want to remind everyone, end of summer fireworks is August 19th, with a rain date of August 20th. Currently, we have four to five food vendors. We have a bunch of community participants and vendors coming in from town, so if you can, please come out. The event will be at 6:00 with fireworks going off, once it gets dark outside. In terms of the Board of Ed, a letter was sent out to parents on July 27th stating that South River will be transitioning to clear backpacks for all students, regardless of grade. Pickup dates will be announced by each school, and the backpacks will be provided at no cost to parents, to each student. And that's all I have, Mayor.
What day did you say that was?
For what?
South River Day? The fireworks?
End of summer fireworks is August 19th on a Friday, with a rain date of August 20th on a Saturday.
Very good. And there it is. I did put it in. Excellent. Mr. Kretchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. The Office on Aging is going to have their monthly mingle this Wednesday, and it required a pre-register, prepaid registration and everything at Grecowski Park. Right now, the Office on Aging is closed this week, and, well, the monthly mingle, yes, the monthly mingle will be on the 10th, I'm sorry, which is next week, and they'll be open the 8th and the 9th, if you want to pre-register for that particular event. It's Bring Your Own Lawn Chair, and it's at Grecowski Park, and it's a nice, nice, well, Grecowski Park possesses pond. And it's usually a very nice event and everything. The Armchair Travel Club is also going to be, and that's another prepaid event that you have to take into consideration, and that is on Thursday, August 18th, and that is pre-registration required. Okay. That, and hope to see everyone tomorrow for National Night Out. With that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just the Library Board I had last week. They're still doing a lot of summer events. Take your kids over to the library or check online. They do have a lot of stuff for the little kids, as well as the older kids. They also have the summer passport for the child. If they go to pick a book, they'll be able to receive a prize or enter to win a prize for the end of the summer. I know last week, they had a Harry Potter party at, on Thursday night. It's not just about the reading or the books. They do have a lot of really cute events for all the kids, so if you have some time to spare, or it's too hot to be outside, don't forget to stop at the library. The Environmental Shade Tree Commission will be at National Night Out tomorrow, so stop by at their table if you have a minute. We are still waiting for our shade tree books so that we can... Okay, so we have our books, so we will be choosing a good, decent shade tree for our town, and then, once we have stuff like that, if anybody is interested in planting a tree or requesting a tree for their neighborhood, please fill out the paperwork on our Borough website to request a tree. I know a lot of the times, we have requests to chop down trees, but we are, we are also trying to plant them as well, so that's all I have for my committees. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Just to build on that, the National Night Out, there's also more to it than just to come out. What you're supposed to do is, the original idea was to turn your outside lights on and to go outside and meet your neighbors. It was supposed to be a community event. It's morphed a little bit so that now we're saying, turn on your outside lights, lock your doors, and come to Denny Stadium there to meet your neighbors there. There's vendors, there's going to be food, you know, have a chance to be part of your community, and that's what it is. It's one of the community building events, like the Memorial Day Parade and the fireworks display, a chance to come out and just see who lives in South River, your neighbor. So please, come out for that. We are moving on to public comments. You can come forward, you'll be given 10 minutes. Please give your name and address. You can ask any questions, make any comments, great and small, concerning the Borough of South River. Hello?
Lisa Byrne, 11 Basset Place. I am a library trustee. I'd like to expand on what Ms. Mira said. At our meeting, it was explained to us that Evelina, the director, was not on site at the time. The gentleman came, worked on the roof, never came inside, never notified the staff. They happened to go outside for something and saw these guys working. They replaced the fascia that was rotten. They also repaired the roof above the severance room, which has never had a problem. We don't know what they repaired. Area, she's had to move everything because that is where the leak has been, opposite side of the building. Don't know what happened, and I don't know for sure who she spoke to. She did say that when she called about it, when she came back in, she was told the roof project is done, and that's it. There, no one's coming back. That is why we asked Ms. Mira to bring it up tonight. It was done. We were here last year when the bond ordinance went out, and council president at the time, Ray Eppinger, everything had gone through, and we were getting a whole new roof. Very concerning to the rest of the trustees, that somebody told them that we're not getting our roof fixed.
Well, would you make sure that somebody does get to the BA, say by Wednesday?
I've already emailed her. And I'll stop by the library tomorrow to make sure that...
And take a look at it, and you also email the business administrator. CC me on that, so we can find out what's going on. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say something quickly?
No, please.
Since Lisa came up as a trustee, I just also remembered that Evelina also asked that we still have a seat available on the Library Board that they keep asking to please fill, so that we have a full board.
And yes, it will be filled. Unfortunately, I could not do it this time. I thought I could appoint myself, but I also need the advice and consent of the council. So at our next meeting, you'll have it in time for the next board meeting.
Can you do that, though? You are already a member, the mayor.
To appoint.
Oh, I thought you were trying to say that you were going to appoint yourself. You have somebody to appoint?
I have somebody to appoint, yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't understand it that way, I'm sorry.
Okay. Anyone else, please? Mr. Byrne?
Richard Byrne, 11 Basset Place, your environmental chair. I just wanted to say that our member, Shari Garretson, had arranged for Kelly Jane Cotter, who's a master gardener with the Middlesex County Master Gardener Program, to be at our table tomorrow night to answer residents' questions on gardening, pest control, lawn care, trees, anything, you know, so unfortunately, she won't be there. She's sick.
Shari?
She won't be there. Yeah, we did get our manual from the New Jersey Shade Tree Federation, so we're going to be developing a, a tree planting program to pick the right tree based on the location and specifics. We will have a sign-up sheet tomorrow night for residents who want trees planted in, in the public right of way from their house. And, not Environmental Commission anymore, but myself, I started working from home last month, and I've been walking around a couple of times, and thanks to the drought, the eternal puddle at the corner of Alchesky and Prentice is dried up, so it's, it'll come back, you know. So I'm walking around, I'm, you know, trying to keep my eye out.
That's a good thing. If you walk at night and you see that there's a light that's out somewhere, let us know. You know, unlike Mr. Eppinger, who used to drive around town with his wife and look for lights that were out, I don't do that, so.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
Mr. Byrne, I just want to thank you and Councilwoman Mara. I know we had an issue with lantern fly, or the bugs everyone keeps talking about at Veterans Drive, so I just want to thank you for taking care of that. You were very responsive, and I know that bathroom was covered in different stages of life of the, that bug, so just want to thank you again for everything that you've done with that. I know.
Getting rid of that certain tree, I think is... Yeah, getting rid of them, so. Okay, sir, please, come in.
Hi. Scott Whitney, 110A Johnson Place. I live, like, right across the street from school. I'm here because I need your help. Seems like every Friday, when I, and Saturday, when I go for a walk, which sometimes is far, sometimes it's not too far, I have to collect a ton of litter. Now, what I want you to do is simple. I mean, I went to the police, they couldn't help me. They said where I live is private property. I said, I don't care. I said, you could put, you could put the no littering sign across the street. Okay? Now, I want people to tell their kids and whoever goes to that school to stop throwing garbage all over the place. Now, this doesn't seem like a big deal, but if you look at any, but, any of the streets, all the streets, our waterways go down to Raritan River, which goes down to Raritan Bay, which goes out to the Atlantic Ocean, okay? Now, this doesn't seem like a huge thing, but when I walk from my place, which is not even a block, it's far, even, not even half a block, if I walk over, I walk to the Willitav from 110A, I cross the street, and I come back. Now, these are six streams that say that all this garbage goes to the waterways. We're talking little bottles. We're talking little bottles of alcohol and all sorts of crap. You know, but you know, this issue is bad. I fill a tall kitchen garbage bag full of litter, okay? That's not small. Now, your town is nice. I've only lived here for five years. But the tragedy is every town I go to has to turn into a ghetto for this kind of reason. I've been to every town. I've lived in almost every town in New Jersey. I'm 44 years old, born and raised in Jersey. Like I said, what I want you to do is pretty easy. I want you to put up no littering signs with fines. I want people to know that what they're doing is wrong, and I want them to not do it. I want them to be educated about what they're doing to the ocean. A few weeks ago, I went to Long Branch. It was with my brother. And I thought, "Man, these people are dirty." Because a diaper and a bunch of garbage came up right up on my feet. And then I thought, "Oh, wait a minute. Our system goes out to the ocean also." So this is, this isn't everybody problem. It's not just a me problem, so.
So you'd like it...
I haven't had a room. I need your help.
So you'd like it around Willit Avenue, around the Johnson Apartments, and up on Johnson Place?
Like I said, I bought a big bag of garbage to the police. I said, "This is what I pick up once a week." You know, I'm one person, and I'm tired. I can't get it all, the litter. But you know, they're saying, "I can't get a no litter sign because it's on private property." And I said, "Well, maybe across the street isn't, not just the kids, it's probably the parents, too." I'm sure none of you are sending your kids to school with little alcohol bottles. And, you know, those little blunt cigarette plastic stuff. But you know, it's, tall kitchen bag is this big. I pack this thing tight with garbage once a week, so. And you know, I could stay in my house and walk on my treadmill. I don't do that.
Well, let's see what we can do. Chief and Mr. Ladenski, if you'd be so kind as to look into that about putting those signs up there. Thank you for coming forward.
Mayor, and I can also speak to the Board of Ed as well.
Is there anyone else to come? Perhaps our distinguished visitor from Spotswood, Mr. Smith? No, okay, then. Going first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Gindy.
Check it.
Seconded by Mr. Seula. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Moving on with our agenda, we come to the consent resolutions. Madam Clerk?
Whereas Resolution 2022-01 authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions 2022-201 to 2022-214. 201, authorizing transfer funds from Middlesex County Housing and Community Development Agency for park improvements. 202, authorizing hourly rates for Recreation Department by Mayor Krenzel. 203, authorizing renewal of shared service agreement with Board of Education for placement of Class III police officers at South River Public Schools. 204, authorizing an extended grace period for the third quarter property taxes. 205, authorizing the South River Fire Department to conduct a boot drive on August 20th, 2022. 203, granting renewal of ABC Plenary Retail Consumption Pocket License for 7/1/22 to 6/30/23. 207, authorizing certain utility refunds. 208, authorizing certain municipal lifeline refunds. 209, authorizing certain state lifeline refunds. 210, approving, approval of special event permit application for Saint Mary's Holy Name Society to hold a family picnic on September 11th, 2022. 211, authorizing Borough of South River to enter into a cooperative pricing agreement with North Jersey Wastewater Cooperative Pricing System. 212, accepting July 11th, 2022 regular and executive session minutes. 213, authorizing the bills and claims list. 214, authorizing permanent status to Police Officer Matthew McCann for the Borough of South River Police Department.
Your pleasure on the resolutions.
Motion?
Motion has been made by Mr. Gindy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Olivera. Roll call.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes, with the abstention of 205, as well as abstention 213, the bills, which was 22-01606, 01746, 01831, 01904, 22-01477, 01478, 00927, 01210, 01426, and 01681.
Councilman Gudzinski?
Yes, but I'd like to abstain from Resolution Number 210.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes, with the abstention of 207 and 210.
Council President Seula?
Yes, with the abstention of 205 and 213 from Bills 22-01606, 01746, 01831, 01834, 01904, 01477, 01478, 00927, 01210, 01426, and 01681.
The resolutions have been adopted. We will be going into executive session after our governing body comments. There will be no action taken thereafter. Governing body comments will start on that direction. Councilwoman Mira?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to make an announcement. One of our class alumnis of South River, Class of '06, Nobiko Hori, she is doing a New Jersey IC3 Youth Ambassador Camp at the First Reformed Church in South River, 40 Thomas Street. It is a week-long program starting August 8th through 12th. It's more directed towards high school kids. It is a week-long program that explores how different risk factors for cancer, environmental ratios, socioeconomic impact marginalized communities, and how local communities are fighting for justice. Nobiko graduated from Rutgers University. She still lives in South River, and she is just getting more involved with the youth here in town. So that is a day camp for students from grade nine through 12th. Again, that is August 8th through August 12th, from 10:00 AM to 3:30 PM. And they're holding that at the First Reformed Church in South River on Thomas Street. I just said I would mention that for anybody in our town that's interested in doing so. Summer is here. I know a lot of kids have started Pop Warner. And it's getting hot. And I just want to thank all the parents and volunteers that often help out with programs like that. Last month, as the mayor mentioned, we lost Jack Ally. He was a deeply good friend, colleague, neighbor, who devoted a lot of his time to the youth. He volunteered in Pop Warner. He helped out with baseball, Little League, an advocate for shade trees in our town, as he was very much involved with the Shade Tree Commission, and recently also on the Parks and Rec Board. I know how sad I am in these last few weeks, and I can't imagine how his family is as well. I think our community and the kids that he touched and helped in this town will deeply miss him. I just hope that everybody also tries to volunteer, help out in the community, and continue to improve it. I know he did it for his love of his kids. I know that's why I do it most of the time, but he definitely loved South River. So my sympathies go out to his family and the community, and even the kids who truly spent a good portion of their summer this year as their baseball season ended right before he passed away. That also, you know, as a Parks and Rec Board member, which I'm now, obviously that space needs to be filled, I just urge people to take some time, volunteer, whether it's in the community or with the kids, as that was something he really enjoyed, and he will very much be missed. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I did have one more thing. I mentioned at the last meeting that we had a committee on utilities. Did anybody research?
Yep.
Yes, I think Mr. Gindy will be commenting on that.
Okay. Last meeting, nobody remembered that there was a utilities board. Mr. Gindy is the chair, as well as Mr. Seula and Mr. Gudzinski. It was brought up at the beginning of the year. We're now in August. And just reminding again, going forward, what is it that we will be doing with these committees since we've been put on them? That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Gudzinski?
Thank you, Mayor. We are in summer. It has been hot. It has been dry. Luckily, we got a few days of rain and everything. That kind of broke a little bit of the spell. But I'd like to thank all of the residents for conserving as much water as they have. It's helped out the borough, especially with our allocation and everything, too, what we didn't have to buy. Watch out for the children. It's hot out there. And stay inside, check on your neighbors. Hope to see us tomorrow evening at National Night Out. And we'll stay cool. With that, I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. My condolences to the Ally family.
Okay. Mr. Olivera?
So, Ms. Mira, I don't think you could have said it any better. I first met Mr. Ally when I moved back in from Savannah in 2015, and I was helping with the rec advisory board. And I think it's just, for us as a community, it's a tremendous loss. If there's one thing that I love and respect about Mr. Ally, it was he didn't care what party you were in. He just wanted what was best for the kids. And I think his work said it all with the rec advisory board. And reading his obituary, the one thing that really stood out was just the fact that it says, "Consider donating your time to a youth sports or mentoring organization," in his memory. And I don't think he would want anything else. As we all know, his kids were his life. But it just wasn't his kids that he impacted. It was the kids of our community, whether Little League, the rec advisory board, Pop Warner. He impacted so many lives, and he will be truly missed. I think although Jack is not with us, I think it's important that we celebrate his life. We honor him in any way that we possibly can. And I send my condolences to the Ally family. And that's all I have for right now, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Seula?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things. Just a reminder, I know a lot of people are planting in their front yards and side yards and all of that. But if you're doing something in a major digging, please call for a mark out. We've had a few contractors taking out gas lines in town when they're digging. A few people took out a water line when they were digging the plant. So please, call for mark outs before you do any type of digging. And the borough does the mark outs for sewer and water, and PSENG will do the mark outs for gas. Along with that, the one resolution that we are working on today is with the No Knock that Mrs. Ballas brought up. And I'm working on a solicitor registration to go along with that. So anybody that is going to be walking around town must be registered with the police department for background checks. And then they can walk around with a permit around their neck identifying that. So we're just gonna make a few adjustments on that. With that, Mayor, I'd like to also send my condolences out to the Ally family. Jack and I, we worked together in the past, and he was a good man. So my condolences. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gindy.
Thank you. At the last council meeting, Ms. Mira did bring up the Utilities Committee meeting, Commission, which I did look into, and sure enough, I am the chair on it. I had the opportunity to actually speak to H, as well as some of the members of the DPW. This is something that we usually meet quarterly. We are going to be arranging a meeting early September due to the idea that everybody pretty much is on vacation. So you will be hearing from me soon in regards of when our meeting's going to be held at. I thank her for bringing that to my attention. As of for the Department of Public Works, they are right now speaking briefly to H. They are, you know, getting a lot of things that they need. There's still a lot of outstanding things that are needed for the Department of Public Works, especially considering how many years it's been since they have had pretty much almost nothing. But we are working on it as we speak. As you heard, Mr. Ally, he is a person that has done more than you can imagine for this town. I had the opportunity to work with him on many occasions. He was a person that really kept South River ahead of him. He's surely going to be missed. I know that, like my daughter today, she's at Pop Warner, and I know that I usually see him running around with the kids for football. It's not going to be easy. But he's a person that we're going to be thinking of all the time. To the Ally family, my condolences go out to you. I did have a question in regards of, a question that came up during our budget when we were passing it in regards of positions. I know that September is right around the corner. When are we, or are we going to post for the business administrator's position? When are we going to move forward on that?
I've already spoken to the business administrator to do that.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay. Okay, I didn't know that. Okay. Other than that, as you all know, it's extremely hot. Please conserve, check on your neighbors, especially your elders. Try to keep dehydrated and enjoy the rest of your summer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The planning board meeting that Mr. Gindy had alluded to was quite productive. Kudos to Mrs. Wilkow ran it. A lot of good ideas were put forth from there. Of course, what made it so shocking with Mr. Ally's passing was that he was there at the meeting. It was Tuesday, and by Thursday, he was gone. I've known Jack since Boy Scout days, and it was just such a shock. If you have a chance on Facebook, his wife put on the eulogy that she gave at the Fisherman. It's just beautiful. It is just really very touching. And again, it reflects so much of what Jack stood for and what he did in his life. So the condolences to the Ally family. It was quite a shock. And, you know, we lost him. And the, also, I attended the, back in July, the Sicknick Garden, which was, and also the benches, which were finally dedicated over at Volunteer Park. Very nice turnout. This entire Sicknick family was there, and a very nice remembrance of Brian for that. It is hot. There's a lot of places that are conserving water by regulations. You know, we haven't done that yet here in South River, but use your heads. You know, if it rains, don't have your sprinklers go off. I mean, it's ridiculous. It's pouring cats and dogs, and the sprinklers are going. Think about it. Think about saving water. Be environmentally friendly. If you're not doing anything on Saturday, August 6th, we're gonna have a cricket match down at Varga Park. So please, if you're interested in cricket, come down. It'll be our very first one. Should be interesting. our very first one, should be, uh, interesting. And also, I know it's a bit confusing, um, because we all talk about the November elections, but actually, we start to vote in September, the mail-in ballots will be sent out at the end of September. Now, in order to vote in New Jersey, you can register all the way up until October the 18th, but if you're interested in voting in November, do it now. And if you're at National Night Out, both political parties will be there, they'll be more than happy to sign you up. So if you want to care about the future, and you want to vote, please register and get out to vote. With that, we are now going to go into executive session. As I said, no action will be taken upon the conclusion of that executive session. I don't know how long it's going to be, but I thank you all for coming, and, uh, I will now entertain the motion to go into executive session. Madam Clerk?
Twenty...
Why didn't she read it first?
2022-215, whereas Section 8 of Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, permits the exclusion of the general public from a meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances, and whereas the mayor and council of the Borough of South River are of the opinion such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of South River and the county of Middlesex of the state of New Jersey that the public be excluded upon the here and after specified subject matters, and that such subject matters to be discussed is as follows, property acquisition. It is further resolved that such record of the above discussion will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required.
Your pleasure on the resolution. Resolution has been made by Mr. Gindy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kretzenski. Roll call.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Kretzenski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
Okay. We shall return. May I have a motion to go back into open? Motion by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mr. Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Is there anything else to come before us? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Kretzenski, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
All against, the ayes have it. We stand adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
In the seventies, not for justice. What's, what's...